Seven o'clock, the time has arrived for us to begin our meeting. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would entertain the board members of there are any with conflict venturists. Patty?
No.
Lou?
No.
Beverly?
I have a disclosure. As a member of the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, I, Beverly M. Booth, am disclosing that I have an interest in the adoption of the fiscal year 23 Prince Edward County budget as my husband is an employee of the Prince Edward County Sheriff's Office, which means he is a member of the group affected by the board's decision. I am able to participate in the adoption of the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I filed a statement of disclosure with the Office of the Prince Edward County Administrator, a copy of which is available for public review.
Thank you. Jim?
No.
Jerry?
Yes, my wife is employed by Prince Edward County Public Schools. So I need to disclose that. Do you have a?
We can have the formal statement. Really, I think you really need it when we adopt the budget. So we'll make sure you have a statement.
Okay. Okay, thank you. David?
No.
Thank you. So we'll move on. The time has arrived for our public hearing of the fiscal year 2022-23 budget and 2022 tax levies. Mr. Doug Stanley, County Administrator, please present.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I wasn't sure we were going to get to this point. You know, we've been waiting for the General Assembly to adopt the state budget, and finally we made the decision about a month ago that we're going to move forward with our public hearing based on the information at hand and make some assumptions. It's my understanding that the state is in concept agreed on the budget, and I believe they'll be voting on it if not tomorrow, soon thereafter, and we'll be getting additional details. But, you know, we feel comfortable with the budget we're going to present to you this evening. So tonight, we've got a public hearing on the proposed FY 22-23 budget and the proposed 2022 tax levies for the 22 tax year. There we go. All right. So tonight's the public hearing on budget and tax levies. On June 7, next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, the board will formally consider the budget pursuant to Section 15.22506 of the Code of Virginia. The board has to wait at least seven days after the public hearing to consider adoption of the budget. And then we are scheduled on June 14 at our regular meeting for the month of June for consideration of the appropriations resolution. The appropriations resolution is actually where you're authorizing the expenditure of funds. It allows not only county but also the schools to spend those funds starting on July 1. So that will complete the budget process. From a planning perspective, the Board of Supervisors and staff have been working diligently on the proposed budget since January. The board has held nine meetings or work sessions to work specifically on the budget. The proposed budget has been advertised in detail in the Formable Herald and has been made available for public inspection on the county's website and in the county administration office. The goals the board adopted at our initial planning meeting included maintaining or improving our current levels of service to our constituents, to stay competitive with staff salaries and address salary compression, continue financial planning for our capital improvement projects that are either underway or proposed, to promote economic development by investing in our community, and lastly, to maintain our low real estate tax rate. Some of the issues, I call them budget drivers, that we're facing, you'll see, we have some increases in revenue, but overall, most of the categories are relatively flat. Two, we're still playing catch-up on what I would call some bare bones budget, and a lot of that I would characterize maintenance budgets, monies that we are appropriating either for maintaining equipment, replacing equipment, taking care of buildings properly, replacing things like roofs and all those types of items. Also, a few personnel priorities, we'll talk about those, creation of a county IT department and transition from our current contract service to county staff. That was one of the bigger issues that the other county departments had brought to me is the need to have someone dedicated on site looking out for our IT needs. We've had a request from the library to address some issues they have in their budget. Capital improvement items, we'll be replacing the courthouse chiller this summer. We're looking at upgrading our waste management infrastructure, both at landfill and each of our compactor sites, upgrading of our emergency communication system, our public safety radio system, and replacement of our animal shelter, to name a few. We've also, what we discussed in the regional economic development initiative, working with the CRC, as you know, the county, and a number of the counties around us pulled out of VGA, the Virginia Growth Alliance, and we're looking to try to come up with a path forward where we can work collaboratively to increase jobs and investment in our region. Our VRS, our Virginia Retirement System rates, those are the rates that the county pays for all staff for their retirement benefits. Our rates are increasing from 8.56% to 9.72%. That's the employer share. The employee also pays a 5% share. And I say DSS catch-up. For last few years, the DSS budget, the local portion, has been, I'd say underestimated, and we're slowly trying to work that up. We've added about $100,000 to it this year, and hopefully another year or two, we'll be exactly where, we've always been paying the bills, but as far as what we earmarked and budgeted, it hasn't been enough, and we're going to try to take care of that. So if you look at the total budget, the total budget is showing a proposed increase of 7.23%. So the FY 22 budget, $62,634,751. The proposed budget, $67,161,030. That's an increase of $4,526,279, or 7.23%. Our revenue, we saw an increase in local revenue from $21,39,237 to $23,165,930, or about $2,126,693. A significant portion of that increase is due to anticipated personal property revenue increase, and we'll talk about that here in a little bit. Our state revenue, this is our state revenue, not the school system's state revenue. This is county general fund revenue to support our operations, is only going up about $257,488. The, I always like to benchmark, benchmark ourselves against our peers. In this case, on this slide, we're talking about salary increase. You know, part of, part of our mandate is to make sure we can adequately recruit a workforce, and we've got sheriff in the room, and I know that's one of the things, it's foremost in his mind, at least every time I get a text from him or talk to him, is his ability to try to fill positions and keep employees. And we wanted to look at what everybody else around us is doing. So we're offering a 3% cost of living or COLA adjustment. So that 3%, I'll say moves the scale, the starting salary moves 3%. But we're giving a 2.5% merit, and that's for individuals, you know, that if you don't, if you're not granting a merit increase or a step increase, the person you hired tomorrow is making the same as the person you hired three years ago. That's what creates the compression issues, and especially in larger departments like solid waste and sheriff's office, where you've got a number of employees doing basically the same job, and they see somebody come in right behind them making the same amount of money. So at least if we can get to the, in a habit of offering merit increase on a somewhat regular basis, you can create some separation between the more recent hires and the people that have been here for a while. When you look at our neighbors, Appomattox is doing a 5% COLA plus some compression, and some of that compression is some of their sheriff's office positions. Amelia's doing a 5% COLA, Buckingham 5% COLA, Charlotte 5% COLA, Cumberland 6%, Lunenburg 5%, and Notaway 5%. So our five and a half, I think, you know, at least we're not, we'll gain ground on a handful of those localities and for once, not backslide. Help me, Trey. There it goes. Our budget revenue, again, some of the categories are flat. The big ones are real estate, personal property. Real estate, we're just showing a slight increase. We went through reassessment last year. Our current estimate's $8,717,094. We bumped that up to $8,750,000. I'd say in a typical year, you're going to add $100,000 to $150,000 in value for new home construction, but based on, you know, what our estimate was last year, we feel this number is pretty close. Personal property is up from the current $5,250,000 to $6,562,500. We'll talk a little bit more about assessments and them being up. Sales tax is one of the categories that was up significantly. I know last year, we saw a lot of activity, particularly Greenfront Furniture, who saw a lot of record sales during the pandemic, and people were out buying. I think, you know, those numbers are still holding steady, so we've been fortunate, we're able to increase it up to $3.5 million. We added in the transient occupancy tax of $20,000. We'll have to spend some of that on tourism promotion per the state code. There's a handful of other categories that are either level or up slightly. And again, personal property values are projected to be up because of that valuation or assessment increase. Significant funding changes for personnel. Again, we have a 5.5% raise. That's cost us about $325,000 across the board for all employees. We budgeted an 8% health insurance increase. We had a 1.3% actual, but using the 8%, we're going to be able to get dependent care and family coverage down to be extremely competitive, and I think we've really made tremendous strides. I don't look for us next year to have to make any adjustment. If we can just hold where we're at, we're, we'll be in great shape. We were, you know, chair, what, almost $1,300 for family coverage. You're talking like a starting deputy salary, you're talking 30% of their pay was having to go to cover health insurance for their family. It's just, it made us non-competitive, and I think now, we've basically been able to cut that in half. A handful of merit increases as well. Additional positions, commission revenue. We've granted a full-time deputy position to help out. We've added lodging tax and meals tax to her department, and this will give them some additional staffing to help address those. Treasurer, we've upgraded a full-time deputy position, excuse me, a part-time to a full-time effective January 1 of 2023. Admin, we've upgraded the part-time receptionist, 30 hours a week, to full-time. And IT, we're planning to hire someone starting mid-year that would be primarily responsible for IT for the county. Sheriff's Office, number of requests from the sheriff, we've been able to, I think, meet most of Tony's needs, including overtime increase from $85,000 to $120,000 in the budget. His maintenance service contracts, which cover radios and other equipment in the office, from $60,000 to $85,000. Vehicle maintenance from $40,000 to $54,000, and vehicle purchase from $165,500 to $180,000. It's not going to buy them any new, more vehicles, but it's going to try to keep pace with the inflation, the higher cost of not only buying the vehicles, but the equipment that goes in them. Fire and rescue, we're picking up fuel costs for the volunteer fire departments and Maheron EMS. We've added Maheron EMS to our insurance premiums. Of course, Peavers is covered already. I believe other town, they get fuel. We bumped the EMS contribution up from Peavers up to $98,000 and Maheron up to $25,000. Again, I mentioned the IT department, six months of funding, just under $50,000. Planning, every five years on the Code of Virginia, we need to update our comprehensive plan. We need to start that process. We're a few years out of compliance with that. It's probably going to cost $100,000, $150,000 at the end of the day, whether we work with CRC or an outside vendor, and we wanted to be able to put some money in the budget so we could start that process in the next year. During the last reassessment, the Board of Equalization made the recommendation that we go from a six-year to a four-year reassessment cycle. I've been through that process before. I think it is more effective. You see, you don't see quite the swings in value by going to a shorter timeframe. Just based on the previous cost, we need to up our budget amount from $50,000 to $75,000. Legal services, we bumped from 25,000 to 50,000. Sometimes we have to pick up counsel, like on solar projects, we get reimbursed for that stuff, but we've got to have adequate funding in the budget to be able to cover it. Building inspections, we need to replace the vehicle that Phillip has. And then that regional economic development initiative, I know we're still working through that with CRC. We're not sure if it'll get off the ground this year, but a handful of counties are starting to fund the budget, and if we get it in there this year, hopefully that'll get us close to where we need to be for next year. School capital improvement funding, we've got $250,000 in our budget towards the elementary school project, and I know that's a drop in the bucket from what it's going to take, but I got word today that the Commonwealth of Virginia is putting $450 million in the proposed budget for a school construction fund for the Board of Education to award grants on a competitive basis from that fund to local school boards that demonstrate poor building conditions, commitment, and need for such local school boards to fund construction, expansion, or modernization of public school buildings. I haven't, I've been around the state a little bit, but I find it hard to believe anybody can be in worse shape than we're in. But I think at least they'll see that the board is making a commitment financially to help us be in a position to pay for some of that. Now, based on our composite index, we would be capped at 20% of project cost, but on a $30 million project, that'll take off $6 million. That's a help. That's a help. So, you know, again, I think that's something that, you know, we need to take into consideration. This is a first step towards being ready for that. Solid waste, you know, last year, we paid for the maintenance building. Now we're looking at trying to improve the paving on the entrance to the landfill and upgrading the scale house. Capital improvement plan, we've still got the same amount of money we put in last year with that four cent tax increase for generic capital improvements, including it'll help pay for the chiller and the rice compactor site and the front lawn renovation and a couple of other things. Sandy River, as we continue to work through the process there, we've got all over $400,000 dedicated towards that project. And right now, in our contingency fund, which this year was $60,265, we've got it up to That's money, if we later decide to adjust the assessments on personal property, we would back that number down and use that money to help us there. I did want to talk about the capital improvement plan, just for those in the public. Of course, the Sandy River project, board received a water withdrawal permit back in 2006. That 15-year permit ran out last year. The board had the foresight to move forward with reopening that permit. We are, we've submitted that application that's going through the process, and we're also working with the Department of General Services on possible expansion and serving that three-state facilities over the line in Notaway, which would help fund the initial construction of the facility. Again, we're not doing this unless it's, it's cost-effective, I'll say that, but we don't want to lose the resource that is Sandy River and its water, and we would like to have it as a resource to help us market the data center site, which is sitting about two miles from the reservoir. Elementary school, you've seen these fixtures before, and they've been in several local newspapers as far as the issues with the roof. And I would say Dr. Johnson's here, I know they're in the process here in the next month or so, doing some temporary repairs up there to take care of the immediate needs and buy us a little bit of time till we can get this construction project moving forward. But, you know, the flashing, the aged roof and the seams are all in pretty poor condition, and, you know, particularly, I've had the opportunity to go up on most of the roof up there, and then on the inside, you see what those cracks and seams cause, which is water, mildew, I won't say mold, but I'll say probably mildew on the inside, but certainly less than ideal conditions for our students to learn in. Our compactor sites, you've got trees falling down last year across our fences, you've got gravel parking lots, I know y'all get lots of complaints, and Jeff, with the new skid steer y'all purchased, we're able to go out and make repairs. But eventually, we want to end up with better-designed sites with a hard surface that is much more convenient for our public to utilize. Animal shelter, as we talked about, was constructed in the 1970s, is in dire need of replacement. We just don't have the capacity to do a good job of taking care of stray animals and taking care of animals that are surrendered from our property owners. We just don't have the room right now, but hopefully in the next couple of years, we can take care of that. Just additional pictures there of the inside of the facility. Our communication system, sheriff's here and a trade from Harren Fire and Rescue is in the back, but we have issues with our communication system. We need to make some significant upgrades, and we're, the board has engaged a consultant, CTA, and they're in the process of getting started this month to look at exactly what we need and hopefully put some final numbers and stuff together so that by this time next year, we will hopefully have moved forward with a solution. Courthouse Chiller, this is our flagship facility. We've been nursing the system, current system. It's over 25 years old. Anybody knows HVAC, you're past your life expectancy. We've got the new one on order, and hopefully in the next month, we'll be delivered on site, and they'll start the installation. We actually, they've been in the, actually in the building for the last month, replacing pumps and stuff on the inside, so we're getting close to being ready for the unit once it gets here. And the other project that's getting ready to come up is the cannery boiler, which we got a grant for $25,000 on. The board has approved the purchase of a new boiler, and that'll be hopefully delivered and installed within the next month before canning season gets really up and running. So we're slowly but surely knocking some projects off the list, and some of these things are obviously, have been, I'm not going to say neglected, but put off for a few years, and we'll be able to knock those out with your help. School funding, just try to summarize a little bit about what the additional funding's going to mean on our side. So in the proposed budget, we had to, we had to make some estimations, and with Dr. Johnson's help, we've estimated about $1,412,812 in additional state and federal funding, and the local funding request was $836,149. Those additional funds are allowing them to fill some additional positions, including an additional math coach at the elementary level, an additional math interventionist at the elementary level, additional reading coach at the elementary level, instructional mentors, one at each of the three schools, a social worker, family counselor, and a Spanish teacher at the elementary level. Also, 5% across-the-board salary increases. They did see a 4% reduction in their health insurance premium, which is great news, and we like to see that. And they've adjusted their salary scales by one-half of 1%. Originally, they were looking at a 1%, so they've carved that back based on available funding, and that was in the amount of $632,311. That second sheet was just a spreadsheet summarizing those figures, that's why I bolted those out. Again, benchmarking Prince Edward to our neighbors. Our proposed budget includes no real estate tax increase. Based on our neighbors, we are the second lowest real estate rate in the region, the lowest being Lunenburg's 38 cents, which is obviously the lowest in the state of Virginia. So we're staying, I would say, from economic development standpoint, very, very competitive. And I think, you know, at some point, we're going to have to make some decisions on the elementary school probably in the next year, but, you know, I think we've got a little bit of room there to address that if we need to, if we have to go there. I'm still holding out hope that sales tax issue will come through for us, but we are very competitive in our real estate tax rate. Personal property assessments, I mentioned that, that our preliminary estimates and talking to some of our neighbors that have had to go through the, who do twice your billing and have had to go through the process, it's likely we'll see a 20% to 30% bump in vehicle assessments in 2022 based on NADA values. Our commission revenue should have all the values in in June. Because we only do billing once a year, and our bills don't go out till October, we've got a little bit of time, if we wanted to make some adjustments in the assessment ratio, we can do that. So we use the most conservative of the NADA values, the clean loan value. Some counties are going from a trade-in or retail down to loan value for the 2022 tax year with plans to go back up next year after those rates go up. Some counties have already are looked at lowering their rate, and some counties are using the new state code allowance to adjust the percentage assessed. So right now, if we use 100% of the clean loan value, once we get all the numbers in and see where that revenue falls. and see where that revenue falls, as long as we can cover what's in our budget, you know, maybe we could go back and take 95% or 90% and be able to give some of that back to our taxpayers. We'll be able to have that discussion here in the next month or so. The personal property assessments, this table shows you, so like Appomattox, they use the clean trade-in, their rate's 335, they dropped the rate to $3. Amelia, clean loan, they're at 415, but they're going to use an assessment percentage of 70%. Buckingham uses clean trade-in, but they're considering clean loan for this year, and they're going to leave the rate at 405. Charlotte, clean trade-in, they're actually, they had dropped it significantly last year, they're going back up from 260 to 325. Cumberland, which was clean trade-in, is considered an average trade-in, they're at the 450 rate also, they're going to use a percentage of 85%. Lunenburg, use clean trade-in, they're going to use clean loan for 22, they're going to leave the rate at 380, and then use an 85% assessment. Notaway hasn't made a decision yet, and then of course Prince Edward, we're at the 450 rate with the clean loan. So, again, that'll be a topic for us as we move forward, but if you get questions, I mean, we're already using, you know, that's one of the things, and that decision was already made a long time ago, we use the lower assessment and a higher value. Some of the other ones use, they flip-flop it, they use the higher assessment but a lower value, so on paper, they think they're, hey, we're giving a better deal. Well, not necessarily, if you look at the NADA values. Most of them worked out pretty close. Last thing in wrapping up my comments, Madam Chair, I would like to use the State Comparative Report. That's a report that looks at the spending of each of the localities in Virginia in total, and then they use a per capita basis. And some people can argue whether per capita is appropriate, but that's, that's what they use as comparison. So, Prince Edward, compared to our neighboring jurisdictions of Appomattox, Amelia, Buckingham, Charlotte, Cumberland, Lunenburg, and Notaway, we are eighth out of eight jurisdictions in total expenditures at $22,6874 per capita. General Government Administration, $8757 per capita. Educational spending for operational costs at $1,114.07 per capita, and Health and Welfare at $30838 per capita. We are seventh out of eight in Public Safety and Law Enforcement and Traffic Control, and sixth out of eight in Public Library Support, Fire and Rescue, and Public Works. Now, I don't think we're cheap, I think we get a great value for what we spend. I think we do a good job with the money and the resources that are provided. But, you know, when I get asked that, you know, comments about we overspend or spend too much, I'll use this data to say, no, we don't, I don't think we do, based on the numbers and the data that the state puts out. I think, you know, we work hard and be, are careful stewards of the money that we're given, the taxpayer dollars. The last slide. Prince Edward is below average of adjacent counties in all categories except Correction and Detention and Community Development. And part of community development is economic development. Of course, we've been spending some money on economic development, whether it's the data center site or promotion through the IDA. And based on the advertised tax rates, we're at the second lowest real estate rate. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we've got a speaker list, I believe that's been given to you of speakers, and I'll be available also after the speakers to answer any other questions that might come up.
County Administrator, while you're walking, I'm just going to voice a concern, and Dr. Johnson is one of our speakers, and I hope it will be addressed in some way, and I don't know if you can really address it. My only concern is, it's a known fact that that elementary school needs work. Well, you're the second speaker, go ahead, you can come on up, and maybe you can address what I'm saying. It's a known fact for everybody who doesn't know, this is Superintendent Dr. Barbara Johnson of Prince Edward County Public Schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Stanley and Board of Supervisors.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
We know the elementary school needs work, those students cannot go back in the fall without something being done. There are concerns from many constituents in the county.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know the approximate cost that will be spent, and will we be able to use any of their, that construction with what's coming up for the overall restoration or big construction? Because just to lose all of that money, and I know it's quite a bit, that's a concern, but it's one thing I know that must be done. So, could you address that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening again, and I want to say thank you all for supporting us and being at graduation this weekend. I appreciate your presence, and I hope that you enjoyed your time there. As to your question about the elementary school, I suspect it will cost us a little over $50,000 at this point, and we are using the money, the monies that we asked, we returned from last year's budget. And I estimate at about $50,000 based on what we have done so far. So, Building G, which was one of the buildings that had minor leaks in comparison to some of the others, Building G has been repaired. There were two primary leaks in Building G. That cost us about $9,000 to $10,000. The unfortunate piece with that is that we had to wait until after another rain, a torrential rain, which was this past weekend and a little the week before, there's yet another leak because, as we all have discussed, the water traveled to another space. So, and, and that, again, was the building that required the least amount of repair. Building E is next on our list, we're expecting that to be about $20,000. So, we're looking at overall, by the time all is said and done, about $50,000, but we are also aware that as we fix one leak or two leaks, there may be other leaks. We've also spent money, and I don't recall the exact amount, so my apologies. We also spent money on a report for air quality. We wanted to do an air quality survey study. There was in only one room mold in the air, but not on any of the surfaces, only one room. And that room has been closed all year. So, that was one of the, if you recall, I told you, three rooms were closed all year, and that was one of those rooms. So, to answer your question, the estimate right now is about $50,000, but that's the estimate right now. If we continue to have leaks as we go along, after we fix them and we have more, then it, the cost will escalate.
When I toured about three, three and a half weeks ago.
About three weeks.
The principal and I were coming back to the office, we discovered another leak near the office area. So, has that been addressed, or will it be addressed when you take care of the other issues?
That will be, that was not addressed this first round, this first round Building G as far as actual roof repairs. And when I say not addressed, it was addressed by our staff, but as far as the actual professionals coming out that we have contracted, they have not come for the main building, just Building G at this point. Building E is next.
So, you've already started working on this project?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Building, as I said, Building G is, was complete, but with the major two leaks there, but now there's another leak in Building G. So, it's, it travels. So, yes, ma'am, we've already started, and Building E is next.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, yes, sir.
What kind of roof is on this particular building, do you know?
No, sir. I, I do not. I'd have to get that from Mr. Good, but I will tell you, and I will share that information that I share with our board, that our board meeting is June 2nd or 3rd, and I plan to give an update on the roof as well as the track, and so I can share that information with Mr. Stanley, who can share it with you. Mr. Good would know, I, I don't know. Anything else? My purpose for signing up was simply to say not only thank you for your support Saturday, no, Thursday, Thursday, but also in general, thank you for your support. I have been here, this is my sixth year, and I feel truly as if this is a collaborative effort to make our schools better, to make our county better, and to work in partnership, and I really appreciate that. And so, on behalf of our PECPS community, and I don't speak for the board, but I'm, I'm sure the board's sentiment is the same, I really do appreciate, we really appreciate all of your efforts and all of your support, and we continue, we will continue and are excited about continuing to work in partnership with you all as we look to designs for a new elementary school, as we look towards fixing the roof, and any other capital improvement projects that are going on. So, Mr. Stanley has been exceptional around communicating with us and making sure that we have what we need in order to give you what you need. And so, that's a personal public shout-out, if you will, to Mr. Stanley for all of his assistance and support.
And I personally want to thank board members for coming out to the graduation. We were well represented.
Absolutely.
And I thank all of you for coming. Dr. Johnson, do you ever think that you will go back to a Saturday graduation?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I believe it's scheduled for Saturday next year.
Oh, okay.
It, sometimes it's Thursday night, sometimes it's Saturday. Last year, it was Saturday. That just has to do with when the year ends and how we get testing in and going too late into the school year. That's, that's how we determine it.
Okay.
Absolutely. Any other questions for me?
Are there other questions for Dr. Johnson?
Comment.
Sure.
I went through Rustburg today, and they are building a new facility, and it really looked nice. I recommend anybody that's going that way, go through the town, look to the left, it's got a nice roof on it, just like it's on the courthouse, like we were talking about.
Oh, wow. Yes.
Yeah, they were doing a pretty job. I don't know who was doing it, but it's worth the trip.
It's worth the trip.
Get some ideas.
Thank you. We will do that.
Do you know which school, elementary, middle, or high?
Couldn't tell.
Okay.
I was on a mission.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Rustburg?
Rustburg.
High school.
High school.
High school.
Oh.
Yeah, if you saw it from the road.
They would have you on that school.
They did the elementary school two years ago, three years ago.
All right.
It's not, not a forward travel.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
We also have signed up Robin Smith, the library. Would you come at this time?
Hi, I'm Robin Smith. Y'all appointed me to be the at-large member of the Central Virginia Regional Library Board, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the library today. Our library serves the residents of Prince Edward County from birth to golden years, and those of us on the board and the members of the community really deeply appreciate your continued support of the library. Director Rick Ewing couldn't be here today, but he said please pass on his own thanks, and he also said to specifically mention how wonderful it was working with Mr. Stanley. We've been really pleased at the number of ways that the library and the county have been able to work together, like with the COVID vaccinations, I mean, COVID vaccine distribution, upcoming first responder day at Wilkes-Lake this coming Saturday, and hope we can continue those things, and just wanted to say we thank you for your continued support of all the people in Prince Edward County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this public hearing? If not, we will end this public hearing. Now, based on talking with Mr. Stanley, no motion is required. The board will consider adoption of the budget at its meeting on June 7th. Are there any other questions, comments, statements?
Madam Chair, just a quick question. As we were going through that, I was looking at their disbursements, access on this, on this, I guess, to the fire departments. We give Pamplin the same thing as we give all the rest?
Crystal shaking her head, yes, over there.
I guess I didn't realize that. Particular reason why we give them, since they're the same thing as we do the others when they're, have Appomattox County also?
Let me just say that predates me, Supervisor Emmert. We certainly can look into that. You know, I know, you know, you had EMS there previously, but as far as the fire department, I can't, yeah, I can't, I can't answer the hows and whys, and maybe that's something, if we want, we can even kick it back to our, our committee to look at as far as the funding, but.
It just caught my eye that I just wondered why we would give them, since they're, that's kind of a dual county.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, and not to trend, but Maheron's a dual county.
Correct.
Lunenburg, but.
That was my next question.
But.
I'd let him off the hook.
But, yeah, unfortunately, I'd say accidents and response usually don't follow political boundaries, and I think we're blessed to have some agencies that are sitting right on the border in a couple of those locations, you know. Think you almost have to look at the call load and call volume and the splits over, you know, what percentage they're running. I know Maheron's number, I think, Trey, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe 60/40? 60/40 Prince Edward, 40% Lunenburg, as far as your call split?
30/40 in most fires, 70/30.
Okay. I have no idea what Pamplin is.
Pamplin EMS with a zero now.
Yeah, EMS is zero.
The fire calls, I don't know, yeah, I don't. I know they cover down, they're backup for you guys down in Darlington Heights. I can't answer that.
Just something to look at, and one more, I was, like I said, as I was flipping through that too, and you brought up the fact that we now pick up insurance from Maheron.
It's going to be based on a percentage split, so if they're, if we're picking up 60% of their EMS call volume, then we'll pay 60% of their insurance up to whatever that amount is. Same with fuel.
Do we pick up Peavers insurance?
Peavers is, my understanding, town, town or farm.
Insurance is.
Us, fuels, fuel and maintenance are covered by.
Fuel and maintenance comes out of town.
Town, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I knew that, all right, that's what.
So, part of that, I think, was just equity issue, we were trying to cover, so both of them now will be in a position where their insurance and, and fuel will be covered.
What was the answer for Peavers on insurance?
County, county does that.
A flat $10,000.
But, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr..
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Do we know how much Maheron's will be? Do we know that yet, Trey?
Do you do a percentage of the $10,000?
I got you, I got you. So, they're going to do a percentage of the 10, of the $10,000, what they.
That's what I would.
Yep.
Trey, do we have any workers who work on a daily basis in Maheron, that are paid workers? How many do we have?
They're digging on two, in my vision.
Okay.
But that's not your total FTE, though, paid, paid staff? I think you, what's your total paid staff?
Total paid count?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like 12.
Yeah, there you go. That's the real, that's, because that's real. You know, you said two day, one night, people may think three, but you got 12.
Right.
Yeah, you got to have a crew there. Yeah, that's not true. Yeah.
Basically, the hours, it typically takes three shifts to cover, so you're, you're two double to six, and three, that's at least nine positions right there, just covering those slots.
Well, see, that would drive this, ask for this system, because now Maheron don't have the volunteer support that we used to have years ago, it's paid. And when they got to the point where Maheron was digging to their volunteer fire funds to cover the EMS and EMS, so that's why we asked for the additional monies, because when I first got on the board, it was 13,000, it's been, well, it was eight. When I first got elected, they went to 13, and it's been there ever since, and that's nine years ago. When I first got elected, they went to 13, and it's been there ever since, and that's nine years ago. So... Right, you're right. That's right.
Yes.
Right.
No doubt, we get more benefit than what we pay for to both agencies. And I think, you know, I think over time, it's trying to figure out, based on call load and dispersion, that we, we're going to have to pick up more slack. Especially since, you know, Pever's lost Cumberland, which places a greater burden on them because the fee for service, what they're collecting is less. And Maheron, like I said, Maheron was digging into the fire department to cover EMS costs, which is not sustainable. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, we're making some strides. I think it's going to take a couple more years to get where we need to go. But I feel like we're making progress.
Like, but accidents, don't y'all, y'all bill insurance or something, or how are you...
No, we have tried it a couple years ago on the board.
Any other comments concerning to questions? If not, can I entertain a motion for recess until June 7th?
So moved.
Second.
At 7:00. Okay, it's been moved in second that we will recess until June 7th, and that's 2022, at 7:00. And the Board of Supervisors on the budget meeting. Patty?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
That one.
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Roy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes, so moved.
And you said that, that's so June the 7th?
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
Next Tuesday.
And then it said, it said 2021, but that's 2022.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Two more meetings.
Okay, thank you so much. Our meeting is near.